Call the Lord, the town of Prescott Valley, regular council meeting, July 25th, 2019. Welcome, everyone. If we would, Father Volmer, please come on down. Welcome, sir.
Good and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for the moisture we receive today. Also ask for moisture and humidity for those places that are having wildfires in our state. And we ask for protection for all those fighting those fires. Also ask for protection for all of our first responders. Keep safe those who keep us safe. I also ask to all those citizens of our town who are going through a type of crisis to reach out for help. So often, we don't know they need help unless they tell us. Reach out for the help. We ask for wisdom for our town council as they make decisions to affect our future and our present. Rest us to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, would you please call roll? Present.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
And Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
We have a quorum, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna move right on to item five. We'll start with proclamations, and it'll be National Night Out. Deputy Chief, are you up for that?
National Night Out, August 2019, where as the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, entitled National Night Out, and where as the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the town of Prescott Valley to join more than 38 million neighbors across approximately 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, and where as National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live, and where as neighbors in the town of Prescott Valley assist the Prescott Valley Police Department and the town through joint community-building efforts and support National Night Out 2019, and where as it essential that all neighbors of the town of Prescott Valley come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kel Palguda, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, as National Night Out in the town of Prescott Valley, and do hereby call upon all neighbors of the town of Prescott Valley to join the Prescott Valley Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019.
Thank you, Diane. Every year since I've worked for the Prescott Valley Police Department, we have interacted with our community on National Night Out. This year is no exception. On August 6th, our officers and non-sworn personnel will be visiting, last count that I got, at least 12 different parties. Our tradition is that multiple block watches in our different neighborhoods will combine and host a party, many of them serve food, ice cream, and other refreshments. Our officers and non-sworn personnel get that opportunity to interact with our block watches in our neighborhoods on National Night Out. One unique event this year that I can talk about briefly is that we have teamed up with Alianza to host a special event at the Mountain Valley Park. So anybody that wants to come to that location, National Night Out is welcome.
Our announcements and presentations. Casey, I don't know if you're coming up on this one or not. Brian's coming up. Facility room renaming proposal. Mr. Whitty?
Good evening, mayor and council. The presentation I have this evening relates to a renaming application that the Parks and Recreation Department has received. This is, has delivered by Ms. Casey Van Heren, library director, on behalf of the Prescott Valley Public Library, or Friends of Prescott Valley Public Library. This presentation or application to rename the second-floor conference room comes in honor of Mr. and Mrs. Joe and Hertha Cool for their outstanding contributions, not only to the Friends, but also in return, the Prescott Valley Public Library. Joe and Hertha Cool moved to Prescott Valley from Michigan in 1978 and immediately began their lifelong involvement with the town. Hertha was a regular volunteer at the Prescott Valley Public Library for 35 years and averaged about 100 hours per month. In 2015, Hertha received the Longevity Award for her dedication to the town. Joe volunteered for the town's litter lifters back in its heyday before the program ended. Both Joe and Hertha's biggest contribution was their legacy donation of $163,000 that they left to the Friends of Prescott Valley Library. These items, excuse me, these, their contributions committed to a, let's see here, trying to find the specifics here. Their legacy donation was left to the Friends and in turn created a program in which those proceeds have been able to advance the agenda of the public library through its materials and other activities and items. The intent here is to name the second-floor room, formerly the genealogy room, to the Joe and Hertha Cool room. There is limited fiscal impact in which the library will bear the naming of that particular plaque. This application has been presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission with their recommendation, and as a matter of town policy, would remain on file for 90 days and then returned and presented back to the town council for their review and finalization of acceptance of that application. In doing so, staff is here tonight to direct any and all elements related to this application that you would like us to consider, bring forward back to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then finalize that application and position, presentation to council in possibly October. Yes, ma'am, please.
Hertha was beloved. She was a little tiny thing, and when I enjoyed her the most was when the former library director, Stuart, did something she didn't like. She'd get right up in there and straighten him out and make him laugh, all at the same time, and it's a loss. Joyful person.
In the audience this evening is Director Van Heren, so if you have any questions specifically related to this application, coming from the library's perspective, I believe she would be happily ready to answer those questions for you. Otherwise, we're ready to continue on and bring back to you at a future agenda date once a policy has reached its requirements and have this item ready to go. Is that excellent? All right. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. If I can just please ask Supervisor Mallory to come on down. You don't hear that too often now, do we? This is an opportunity for us to give recognition to former councilwoman Mallory, current supervisor of District 5 now, and we're gonna be presenting her with this plaque, and it says, "In honor of your service, in appreciation of eight years of dedicated and exemplary service as a council member for the town of Prescott Valley, June 2011 to July 2019." And Ms. Mallory was next to me for seven months, and now, of course, now I have Councilwoman Anderson, and we all know who would be better sitting there next to me on the left, no offense, sir, but she's on the bigger and better things, and she is gonna do all she can to benefit Prescott Valley, just as she has done for the last eight years. So it's just truly amazing, and I'm just so proud to call her a friend. We talk, you know, multiple times a week, and it is truly a delight. So with that being said, we're gonna go around a little bit. We'll save the vice mayor for last. Councilman?
Well, having served with Mary since 2013, and I actually sat in the audience for three years before becoming a council member, so I watched Mary get on the council and move along in her positions, and she's always been a bright spot on this council. You know, she always spoke from the heart, and she always spoke to do what's best for our community, and she'll be missed as a council member here, but now that she's on the Board of Supervisors, she's gonna be able to take that same energy and compassion and bring it to Yavapai County. And, you know, we wish you the best, and we thank you for your service here, and we look forward to bigger and better things from you. So thank you for representing us all these years and for representing us in the future.
Well, Mary, I've been with you since the beginning of your service to Prescott Valley, and I know you're just beginning to serve Prescott Valley since District 5 is made up primarily of Prescott Valley, and you've made a good start, and I know you'll continue to do a great job for us. They couldn't have made a better selection. I'm very proud of you. I'm very proud of everything you've done. The Healing Fields, of course, was your idea, and we're so proud to have that here in Prescott Valley, and it'll be here now forever as a result of all your hard work, and Kirk, of course, was involved alongside, side by side, and the county is very lucky to have you representing them. So thank you very much, Mary.
I know, I don't wanna cry either, so thank you for welcoming me when I first started out as well, and your words of wisdom is something that we all live up to, and so I really wanna thank you for your leadership. You are where you're supposed to be, and so we're excited for you, but it is our loss. So we do appreciate everything you've done, and you have set the bar high, and I just wanna say thank you for that.
Mary, Mary, what can you say? I've known you for, I've known you for years. We started the Healing Fields, I don't know, seven years, eight years, something like that? Super job there, super job here. You're gonna be missed, although we will hopefully see you on the Healing Fields, especially Kirk. Kirk will be out there and help us out. Right, Kirk?
Yes, sir.
You got it. Thank you for your service here. You are a bright light, and I hope you carry it with you wisely to the county. Thank you.
Mary, thank you. It's been a pleasure for eight years, and I'm gonna miss all the phone calls, going ahead and asking questions about agenda items and what have you. So thank you for your passion and for your caring for the community. Thank you very much.
This lady is part of my heart, and she, she's been there on every adventure I started on, to encourage me, to pick me up if I stumbled, and she did me the great honor when she wanted Healing Fields here to come and talk to me about it and get my opinion, and then she really did me an honor, 'cause she said, "Would you help?" And, boy, was I glad to help. Mary's already plunged into her new adventure. I happen to know she risked her life just a few days ago with Tom Thorman in a truck with the wheels all over by the edge of the mountain. Is that not true?
Yeah, that was an experience, yeah.
So the point of my sharing that story with you, whatever she takes on, she takes it on instantly with passion, dedication, and she never lets anyone down. Bless you, no matter what troubles you get into, you always have a whole group to come to.
Thank you.
Normally, we don't do this, but we have a special occasion tonight, and we have a special person here as well. So Mayor Scoob, will you please come on down? I'm sure he'll have a few words to say. Let's go, mayor. Everyone knows who you are.
I certainly didn't expect to be speaking here. It's, Mary, we appreciate what you've done. Congratulations, and I know you're gonna do more, so keep it up. And Kel, mayor, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate that. And it, I see Ivan is here. He, I don't know what to say about attorneys.
Laura says you give him, give her headaches.
But then you solve them. Great staff. I'm so proud of this staff. I worked, I guess, 26 years altogether, I was on the council, 19 as mayor, and probably the luckiest mayor in the state, as you are. A staff that's absolutely straight, and I talked to mayors that have worked with a dysfunctional staff. This staff is rock solid. I also talked to mayors that have a divided council. This council has been absolutely rock solid. You're in good hands with this council. So keep it up, Kel, and all of you. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Okay, so, you know, I, I will not get emotional. I'm looking. Anyway, I am, yes, I am. So this was a whirlwind, as you know. It just came about, I felt the passion to put my hat in the ring, and God bless me, and I feel that the decision was the right decision, and that I have an opportunity to serve the community that I've already been serving for over the last eight years in a bigger, in a bigger way. I am passionate, as all of you know, about this community, but I am so passionate about our country as a whole, because the reason that I got to do what I've done is because of the freedom and the fight of many who I will never know that gave us this opportunity to participate in our country, in our communities, our state. It's not to be taken lightly, and I had so much support, so many people. The names are endless, and I could not have achieved what I've done without all of you, this council, and this community. It's not a one-man show. It's a group of united people standing together to do the best for everyone. And I will go forward and make sure that I will continue to serve this community with all my heart and soul, and, you know, I, the Healing Fields was something that I really, really wrapped my heart around. So my big thing with that is those people didn't know that that was their last day. So live every day to do the best you can for what you got, for each other. It's important. And one, and the other thing was, when I re, when I ran for election the second time, the newspaper talked to me, as they do to all of us, and we, all the council, the ones that were running for reelection, all had really, I think, really cool titles on their article. Well, mine said, "She's been doing this for five years, and she still doesn't have an agenda." And I was like, "Oh, jeez, I don't know about that." I did have an agenda, and it was the people of the community. There's a plan for this town, and whoever chose and chooses, or gets appointed, or runs for election, embrace this town for the way it is, 'cause it's fabulous. It's just amazing, and you will enjoy every second of it, like I have. So I so appreciate the opportunity I've had. All of you have given it to me. I will be forever grateful. I am only a phone call away, and I'm only about 10 miles in my office away, and Larry said that I could use an office here. If any of you wanna meet with me, I will do that. And before I close, I do have to say that my husband, I'm telling you what, you can't do anything like this without the love that he has for me. He is my rock, and I appreciate him and love him. Thank you, Kirk. And as I move on to my next career, I would like to introduce a young lady that all of us have seen a lot of, but she is my assistant now with District 5. And Cynthia, would you please come up? Leah and Pam, oh my gosh, those two ladies, they kept me in line for all this time. I'd be dialing up, what am I doing? Where am I going? And now I have Cynthia, and her and I have hit, we've hit the ground running. We have. She's an amazing young lady. She is my teammate in this process going forward to serve you as a community, and I look forward to both of us. When you reach one, you've reached the other. We're here for you, and please feel free to reach out to me or Cynthia. And mayor, I have enjoyed working with you, and I only look forward to doing it more and moving forward to do the things that the town has a vision. Thank you. God bless us. God bless us. We are blessed.
Now, we're gonna take about a 10-minute recess, and if you would just enjoy some service to the town of Prescott Valley, and this probably puts you in the top three or cupcakes, some cake, whatever else goodies we got up there. four for longevity, I believe.
Something like that.
But who's counting, right?
Yeah.
So we can go around a little bit. Councilman Grossman, you wanna start it off?
Seems like yesterday that we were doing the 25-year pin for you, and Mayor Scoob was at his level best at making the comments. 30 years. I know the full, the whole time that I've been in the, in a resident here in the town, you've been the town manager, and I know when I was getting ready to run, I came to you often and, you know, asked different questions, which I continue to do. You know, Larry is a great resource of doing the balancing act of, you know, what's right, what's wrong, you know, should we do it, shouldn't we do it? So it's always great to be able to bounce ideas off of him and ask him the questions, you know, to make this town run right, and he's been doing it for so long, and, you know, I have to say that this is probably the best community, not only in Yavapai County, but in the state of Arizona, and a lot of it is due to his leadership and his mentorship to everybody that's been around. I mean, just take a look at how many staff are here and everything. So it's always great. So thank you for your 30 years. We look forward to at least a few more, and we thank you for that.
I really think there's a mistake on the agenda. It's supposed to be five years.
30 years of dedicated service. Out of 35, 30 years is pretty good. Yeah, yeah. Seriously, it's been a pleasure working with you, sort of. It's been interesting, that's for sure. I think for everybody in the room, it's been very interesting, and I'm sure others will have things to say about it, but I know Richard will before he get, before he gets done. But no, as Marty said, it is comforting to know that if we have a question, we have someone that we can go to to get an honest answer. It may not be the answer we hope to hear, but it certainly is an honest answer and one we can depend on, and that's because of that 30 years and because of that experience, and that is comforting to me, and I do appreciate it, and I appreciate the fact that you are blunt with your answers to me. You know, you certainly don't hold back and coddle anyone, so that's a good thing, because I don't have time for people to do that. So it's been refreshing to be around you for those, these 10 years. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate the time we've been able to spend together. So thank you, Larry.
Larry, I met you at the Citizens Academy, and you had such a fire and passion for everything you do, and it still comes forth today as if it was brand-new, and I wanna thank you for that and your wisdom and your leadership for this great community, and it is amazing when someone can dedicate that much time to their profession. So we just wanna say thank you so much for all your years of service and the pride of all of us still to this day. So thank you for that.
Hey, Larry, I met you '06, '07, a long time ago. You were doing the soccer thing. You were skinny. You had a full head of hair. But you were, you were a great guy then, and you still are. You, this town, I don't, I don't even know if it would be this town a warding for you. You are- to me, and I do appreciate it. And I appreciate the fact that you are blunt with your answers to me. You know, you certainly don't hold back and coddle anyone, so that's a good thing, because I don't have time for people to do that. So it's been refreshing to be around you for those, these 10 years. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate the time we've been able to spend together. So thank you, Larry.
Larry, I met you at the Citizens Academy, and you had such a fire and passion for everything you do, and it still comes forth today as if it was brand new. And I want to thank you for that and your wisdom and your leadership for this great community. And it is amazing when someone can dedicate that much time to their profession. So we just want to say thank you so much for all your years of service and the pride of all of us still to this day. So thank you for that.
Hey, Larry, I met you '06, '07, a long time ago. You were doing the soccer thing, you were skinny, you had a full head of hair. But you were, you were a great guy then, and you still are. You, this town, I don't, I don't even know if it would be this town a warding for you. You are a super guy, I think, and I appreciate your service here. And it's interesting to note that very few, there's, longevity is kind of not the key word for a town manager. They, they come and they go, "You've been here a long time. I really would like you to hang on a little bit longer, at least till I leave," so, because you're really easy to get along with. Okay, thanks a lot for your service, by the way.
I don't remember coaching you in soccer.
That's, that's a good thing.
I don't think soccer was around when you were a kid, Councilman.
Yeah, I do. I, I, you say he's easy to get along with. He must be in a different office. You know, I, I've known Larry since 1990, back when he really did have hair and he was six feet tall. Larry has done some incredible things, and I know how uncomfortable he is standing there. He'd like this to be over, and it's not, it's not going to get over nearly as fast as he would like it to. And he's doing this only because Leah is making him do it, I'm sure, after this 30 years. But it's a good opportunity because it's an opportunity for the town to look at itself and say, "What have we accomplished in 30 years?" And of course, Larry has always given credit to many others, staff, council, but we know that Larry's also had a great deal to do with it, and we're grateful for all the work he's done.
Sure, Larry, and I'll be sure to deposit this right away. You know, we all, many of us remember Larry. I too remember when Larry first came, I was working for the county, and he'd, it was some guy who would come to Prescott Valley from the hinterlands in New Mexico. His claim to fame is he built roads in the national forest, and that was a really important thing, because all the roads in Prescott Valley were dirt roads. So many of the things that he accomplished while he was a Public Works Director, by the way, he was a rascal during that period of time. He was. First time I saw him in his office, he was like, "You remember the bubble guy that runs around in the bubble?" Well, he had a bubble room that was his office because it was down in the shop, and the dust was so thick that you had to keep the bubble around him so that he could breathe. But I can remember, and it's funny kind of coming at it as a department head, interacting with Larry first as the Public Works Director, because he'd stand up here in front of the council and whine about things. And he'd talk about his poor, tired, old equipment and all of the things, and he was always very boastful about things that he would do, to an including chip sealing a parking lot, even though it was in conflict with the town code and things like that. He did a lot of things that were rather cavalier, but he got a lot of things done. I had coined the term "do as I do, not just as I say," specifically because of Larry as the Public Works Director, because he would just go out and do something, and he would suggest to me that because the, it was being done by the Public Works Director, he was exempt, or the town was exempt from their own standards. I've watched him mature over time, and now he's the one that has matured to the point where he's saying, "We have to do things right." And I give Larry credit for that morph, as he has grown as a leader and as, as my colleague and as my boss. He doesn't treat me like he's my boss. He gives me an opportunity to input. Certainly, we have disagreed many, many, many times on a lot of things, but I do very much appreciate his stewardship of this town and the time and energy he's put forth. He and many others have accomplished a great deal during the 30 years that you've been here, Larry. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Would you like to sit down?
I'm not going to talk a lot about what Larry's done. Obviously, he's done a lot of things. I've been here 21 years, and I just want to say he's one of the best bosses I've ever had. I've enjoyed working for him all this time, and he lets me do my thing. And I'm not going to tell any stories like the time at 2:00 in the morning he took me to the hospital because of, we were out working on something and I got injured, but we won't get into that. But I just want to say thanks for everything, Larry.
As you all know, I'm probably the junior member here at 15 years with everyone that's been up here. So as you probably know, I followed in Larry's footsteps as a Public Works Director. He did a great job. He was a big shoes to fill. What I always appreciated, Larry, has helped me a great deal. He was a great Public Works Director. Obviously, he moved up to Town Manager, but he's been a great mentor to me. You know, even in the transition, I always laughed that people got used to, you know, Larry moved upstairs. I always said, "Well, I'm actually the taller Public Works Director here, guys, at 5'7". So people got used to that. But Larry, thank you for all your mentorship of me. I really tried hard to fill your shoes. I think we've had a great transition, and as everyone said, you're a very fair guy to work for, and you let us spread our wings and use our expertise to our best, and you always have our back, and we always have yours. So thank you. It's been wonderful working for you.
Some of you may or may not know Larry was the leader and developer of our park system here in town. So without that, I would not have the beauty and the benefit of working with our community and the creation of what Larry started for us. So I can only say I'm very indebted for that. You've given us a very solid foundation for those types of things in our community and helped grow that. Again, as Norm and others have said, you've supported us through our processes and development and enrichment of this community through our services. So thank you so much for your leadership, your dedication and support.
Just suffer through it.
There you go. I'll be nice, sort of. No, but Larry came into town about the time that I was just starting off at the newspaper, and so we've known each other for like 100 years. And so when I talk to people today, I always tell them, it's like every really big thing that has happened in Prescott Valley in the last 30 years, Larry Tarkowski is behind it somewhere. And this man has amazing common sense, amazing passion for this community, and over the past 30 years, you've been a friend and a mentor, and I just really appreciate working for you and I appreciate you as a person. So thanks, congratulations.
Here come the skeletons.
No, not at all, not at all. I'm not going to say too much, but I'm going to say that I've really appreciated Larry. I've, I've been amazed when I watch you and listen to you, when you're talking to people, your knowledge and how you handle them and manage to get people out of the office real quick when they need to. For me and my safety, it, it really does amaze me every day when I watch you in action. But I'm surprised that you're still standing here right now, because you hate to be complimented. Every time I even try mid-sentence, he's down the hall and out the door. So he's stuck here today, listening to all this, and I'm glad that he's able to hear it, because it's all true, and I appreciate you so much and thank you for the opportunity that I've had these 15 years. And I'm so happy I was able to make you an example, to show up here today and get this award in public. Thank you for your service.
First of all, Larry, I want to say thank you for being my friend. I don't work, but the best thing that's ever happened in my life. That real slow, okay? Don't mix it with anything.
Put it down next to me.
Instead, I want to take my time, if this time these people want to hear a few things. I met this man a long time ago. My wife used to work for Sunrise Engineering. Everybody knows me, I've been really sick, I've had five surgery parts everywhere, and I'm still here, thank God. But Larry, my God, what a man now you are. Right when I needed you the most, I was in bed, almost dying in the hospital, and early in the morning, no one knew, because they just moved me to a different room in IC, and he's the first guy in the whole town, right in front of there, giving me a hug to give me the courage to go on for the big surgery. Not just then, but all the time, even when I had my knees down and my hips. But how can you, how can you compensate for a friend like that? What do I have to do to say thank you with all my heart? But I will say this, I don't even have the strength. Usually, I'm a pretty good talker, but I'm weak right now. I would, I would like to take my hat off and say, "In Roman style, hail to Marcus Aurelius", of all time, the greatest general, and that's what you are. No one can top you off, Larry, believe me, I know, I've seen it happen. If I have the strength to read this, Larry, I've known you for 20 years. Thank you for the dedication and the great service you give into this town. You are through, went some great times, some hard times, and some bad times, too. You always find a way to manage to get us through somehow. And I want to say, in your sunset of years in your life, may God bless you and all your loved ones. Thank you again for all your years.
Is your bank account?
Larry, I want to congratulate you.
Is your bank accounting?
I can remember when, when you first were hired, it was, Mayor was a gentleman by the name of Ed Smith, and he commented, he says, "I kind of like that young man from Flagstaff." And of course, he got hired. That was when you were six feet tall and still had hair. You've been, you've done a great job for us. You were mayor, or not mayor, manager for the last 14 years when I was mayor, and you've been a good mayor. I was maybe luckier than some, because you were the second manager I worked with. Both have been wonderful. And now you've got another mayor who I know is going to appreciate your services and a council. Just keep up the good work. Stand tall, I know that's hard, but you've done a great job. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, I know we've got to get the meeting going, but I knew Larry before he was the town manager. We didn't get along at all. I had flooding issues on my street, and we were unhappy and ticked off. So we had a meeting, and guess what? He ticked us off more. But, but, here's the important part of what I just shared with you. He processed it and he thought about it, and he called me back and he said, do you remember? No? We really got off to the wrong foot. Let's try again. And that's the kind of guy he is. You know, a few years later, I went on the council, and we've been toe-to-toe and disagreed, but he's never been anything but a gentleman and telling me, "I might be right, you might be right, but we'll agree to disagree." How, how can you get mad? So the point of all this, you're not an angel. You're not perfect, but you're the only man for this job and this time that accomplished what was accomplished. I don't think anyone else could have done it.
Yes, we'll wrap it up pretty soon. Larry, you've made it easy for me for the last seven months, and as the mayor mentioned, if anyone has a question, you always have the answer. And although we don't see eye to eye on everything, I know that you have the best interests of the town in mind at all times, which is so priceless. So for that, thank you for making my job easy and congratulations on 30 years.
Just thank you. There's really not, not much else to say, except there's no one of us as smart as all of us. And thank you for your wisdom, your guidance, and the wonderful people that I've worked with for 30, 30 years.
All right, moving on. Tyler Brown, five years of service. This is going to be a tough one to follow, Deputy Chief, so I'm guessing this back row is all going to come up and talk as well.
Absolutely. Tyler? Anybody else you want to bring with you? Up to you. Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity again to recognize one of our officers and his five years' worth of service to the town. You know, I, I think that Tyler is somebody that 25 years from now, we're going to be saying very similar things to what we just heard about Larry, but even better. So I'm very proud of our police department. This is the safest community in northern Arizona, one of the safest in the state from many different perspectives, and Tyler is an example of the reason for that. We have incredible personnel working for us. Tyler started with us about five years ago. He impressed me immediately as a very hard worker and an intelligent and considerate man. So again, I think that over the course of his career, we expect to see some really wonderful things, but we've also seen some incredible accomplishments on his part. He began working with us in 2013 as an intern, which is somewhat unique. I think we have at least one other officer, Sergeant Tony Lawrence, working for us now, who is also an intern. And then in 2014, he became an officer with us after graduating from the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy here in Prescott Valley, and he also received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in philosophy from the Northern Arizona University located in Flagstaff. Since 2014, Officer Brown has been assigned to patrol and then as a school resource officer, and now he's back in patrol. He worked as a school resource officer with the Humboldt Unified School District at the Bradshaw Mountain High School and received a lot of praise from the people that he worked with and for at the school. Court Minor says that he did a phenomenal job building relationships with students and teachers. He completed many classroom presentations and developed relationships with students at lunch and after school. The Bradshaw Mountain High School administrative team relied on Tyler constantly for law-related issues and his input on developing ideas to curtail behavior like vaping. Tyler was a valued member of the Bradshaw Mountain High School staff. According to Officer Brown's supervisors at the police department, Tyler has achieved an excellent level of know-how to perform his job as a police officer and was recognized as an exceptional school resource officer and police officer. As a result of his efforts, Tyler has been the recipient of the Prescott Valley Police Department's 2017 Community-Based Policing Award and the 2018 Prescott Elks Lodge Officer of the Year Award. Tyler is happily married to his wife, Jessica. Thank you for sharing him with us, and Tyler, thank you for your work.
Officer Brown has elected not to say anything. He's going to defer to his wife for comments? No? All right, come on up here. Tyler, thank you for all you do. Thanks for everyone that's back here as well. Thank you for all you do as well, and it says a lot, your colleagues are up here, the chief's here saying great words, and we'll see you in another 20 years. Yeah, absolutely. All right, everyone, moving on to, moving on to item 11.
come up and say, thank you for getting it done. Even though we didn't do it, at least they were blaming us, the least they could do is give us credit for it. Okay, on to a serious comment. I've been talking about this before. We have, I have, there's an event that I'm involved with called Hope Still Floats. It's a fundraiser for the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center. The Yavapai Family Advocacy Center is the only location in all of Yavapai County that is able to do a sex and sexual assault exam. Not even the hospitals are allowed to do that. You need a specially certified nurse and a bunch of other stuff. Anyway, so this is their fundraiser. This is our fifth annual one. It takes place at the Prescott Resort and Conference Center. It's going to be on August 17, 2019. Time is from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Tickets will be $60 per person. And the theme this year, if you could see it, is Here's Looking at You Kid, which is basically the theme from Casablanca. So if you want to come dressed appropriately, you'd be dressed 1930s, 1940s. There is live auctions, silent auction items. It's a great fabulous dinner included with it. If there are any businesses or service companies that want to... Okay. Yeah, if anybody has a business or a service that they would like to donate as a prize for the silent auction or possibly live auction, please see me. If you have to go to the website to sign up, it's yfac.org for more information, or just Google Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, and somebody there will be more than happy to help you. So, and if you have any questions. I have extra cards for this, so if anybody in the audience that would like one, please come see me at the end of the meeting. I have plenty of these with me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Councilman, councilwoman, councilman. All right, moving on. Item 11, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Council, we've all had a chance to review the Consent Agenda. Is there any items we'd like to remove or discuss?
I would, Mayor, I'd like to remove item G.
Okay. Item G, if we could just remove item G at this time, and if there's no other items to be removed or discussed, let's go on approving Consent Agenda on items A, B, C, D, E, F, and H. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the items on Consent Agenda with the exception of item G.
I'll make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
I'm going to have to verbally vote yes.
Okay. And that passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And now, item G, discussed separately, approving the UVR WPC Professional Service Contract with CDW Consulting in the amount of $105,000. Vice Mayor, you have comments on this?
I do. I wanted the council and the community to know more about this item. We have a businessman all the way from Texas that is bringing his fine expertise here, and I wanted him to tell you a little bit about what he's going to do for us. So I'm asking Mr. Donnie White to come on up. And we already had a conversation about what I wanted him to share. But Donnie, if I miss something, don't hesitate to throw it in.
Don't say that. I may be up here a little while discussing it. But I'd like to say thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you all about our project and for the consideration to be able to do the work. But anyhow, my name is Donnie White. I am a managing member and Chief Operating Officer of CDW Consulting Group. It is a family-owned business that has taken multiple generations of knowledge based on working with rangeland and habitat throughout various regions of Texas, and applied that to trying to provide more sustainable means of managing those rangelands and reestablishing our native grasslands, as well as protecting our water resources. So in regards to this particular project, what we'd be doing is working on three projects. The projects would entail our utilization of juniper in the area, as well as some other work involving some of your chaparral brushes, which I know were problematic for you guys in regards to wildfire, as well as reduction in loss and grazing ability for landowners. So we'll utilize those materials to manufacture a, what we call a bio sock or wattle. That product is actually a tubular device in various diameters that is utilized to allow for the filtration of water, rather than the damming or redirection of water. So if you have areas that are problematic, have runoff that contains lots of sediment or soil, as well as various contaminants, this product will actually allow for that water to filter through and retain those heavy metals or bacteria such as E. coli within the tube sock. So anyhow, what equipment we'll be bringing to this particular project would include a Ramir HG 6000 Hulltree chipper. That's a 65,000 pound machine that's utilized to size the materials that would go into these socks, essentially process the biomass. And we would have that accompanied by an M931A military truck, as well as a trailer that would help us to move those materials on-site and reduce our impact to the land. That's the key thing here, is a reduction in impact to your top three inches of soils and your native seed banks. So we'd also have a 42-foot gooseneck trailer that will contain our sock manufacturing plant. This would actually be the first of its kind, in that the manufacturing plant is mobile, which would allow us to go out and support various operations in the reduction of biomass. We wouldn't be tied to one particular area. We can actually go into the field and logistically try and support, whether it be Forest Service, you guys locally, or state agencies as well. We would have a conveyor system, as well as a palletizing machine, which will allow us to process that material on-site and palletize it for shipment to the various purchasers. And we'd also have skid steers and attachments with those skid steers that we'd utilize for support operations. I wanted to just open it up for questions. I don't know if I covered everything there. I'm just trying to keep it short and sweet. But if y'all have any questions regarding the project?
I had one. So this is also for areas to be utilized in like flash flood areas, things like that?
Correct. Yes, we would, for instance, I guess in Flagstaff, y'all have the museum fire. With the rain today, you know, those areas are prone to high concentrations of erosion. But if you apply these devices, you would actually dissipate the energy in that rainwater and hold on to soil and sediment, which...
Thank you, sir.
I have one question. What's the life expectancy of those wattles?
So the life expectancy on those wattles that we can guarantee is five to 10 years. When, in comparison to straw wattles in other climates where you have a lot higher humidity, the life expectancy is three to five times that of straw wattles. But it will all depend on the area and the amount and volume of water that comes to that area.
We're also hoping in the future to utilize it for mines, because it also takes all that and collects that contaminant. And people are stunned when they hear how many mines we have right here in Yavapai County. So we're just very excited about you being here. And the reason I wanted this to happen is I thought you might all wonder what you were getting for $105,000.
If we have no other questions, can we get a motion?
Go ahead. It shouldn't be me.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve the UVR WPC Professional Services Contract with CDW Consulting in the amount of $105,000.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, sir.
You have a good one. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 12, new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Item A, accepting Mary Mallory's resignation from council effective immediately.
The mayor and council, this is just housecleaning. You've seen her letter of resignation. You've honored her for her service. Now you need to take an action, accepting it.
Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion?
I'll be glad to make that motion. Motion to accept Mary Mallory's letter of resignation, authorizing a copy of the same to be forwarded to Secretary of State's office by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, sir.
You have a good one. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 12, new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Item A, accepting Mary Mallory's resignation from council effective immediately.
The mayor and council, this is just housecleaning. You've seen her letter of resignation. You've honored her for her service. Now you need to take an action, accepting it.
Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion?
I'll be glad to make that motion. Motion to accept Mary Mallory's letter of resignation, authorizing a copy of the same to be forwarded to Secretary of State's office by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item B, it's a public hearing. Class A bingo license for villages, bingo, at the villages at Lynx Creek at this time. Open it up to the public. It's a public hearing.
Is this your idea, Richard?
That's mine.
Mayor and council, this is my item. I'll go ahead and take it. Just periodically, we will have a bingo license request come forward through our office. And what we're asking for is the council's recommendation to approve this bingo license for the villages bingo out at villages at Lynx Lake, or Lynx Creek, rather. It'd be a one-year one, and it is renewable each year.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public? Public hearing's closed. Move on to item C, consideration of recommending the approval of the new class A bingo license for the villages at Lynx Creek located on 12200 East State Route 69 Dewey.
That's what we're doing.
Is there a problem?
Ivan, were you okay?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion?
Motion to recommend approval of a new class A bingo license for villages bingo. Margaret, oh boy, I'm not even going to try. Con is here. Well, with my glasses, without my glasses, the letters were running. By electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Oh, yeah, they're already sent out. That's what I couldn't tell.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item D, public hearing for a zoning map change. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You're considering a zoning map change for two currently commercially zoned lots residing at the corner of Katy Circle East and Loose Drive. The subject properties here indicate, you can see the relationship to the adjoining C-13 across the street. The proposal was for a series of two duplexes on these two lots. They've also included illustrations of elevations that are proposed. The purpose now is for the public hearing, after which you're asked to consider a resolution, which is the next item, excuse me, an ordinance, which is the next item, which would be read twice. This matter was presented to the Planning Zoning Commission on July 8, and it comes to you with the unanimous recommendation for approval. I would respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Council, have any questions for Mr. Parker? Open it up to a public hearing. Doesn't look like anyone has anything on this item. We'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item E, consideration of reading ordinance number 866 as attached with conditions by title only on two separate occasions, and then place the same on final passage approving ZMC 19-006.
Nothing more to say?
We're doing a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to read the ordinance number 866 by title only on two separate occasions, and place the same on final passage.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. You're up.
Ordinance number 866, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending town zoning map to change the zoning classification of an approximate one-half acre property located at the northeast corner of Loose Drive and Katy Circle east from C-1-3, which is commercial neighborhood services zoning, to RS-3 residential services zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to item F, consideration of approving the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for drainage improvements to Sunset Lane, CIP number S387. Sir?
Mayor, council, good evening. The IGA you have before you is in line with the previous IGAs that have come before you for the Sunset Lane project. The original IGA authorizing partnership with Yavapai County was approved in October of 2016. One of our funding partners is Yavapai County Flood Control District. And through the efforts of former supervisor Smith, Dan Cherry, who was the director of the Flood Control District at the time, Lynn Whitman, who's the current director, and her staff, they were able to authorize $1.2 million for storm drain improvements on the project. The initial distribution was to be $600,000 last fiscal year, which was approved through an IGA last September, and then $600,000 this year. The project started in May, and to date, we have not started any of the storm drain improvements, so we weren't able to expend any of that $600,000 from last year. So the IGA you have now is in line with it. It's the $1.2 million. The unit bid prices did come in at $1.18 million, so we're looking to expend all of that $1.2 million. And the IGA was approved by the Board of Supervisors last week, and we have it on the schedule to begin storm drain improvements next week.
Thank you, sir.
And that's it.
Comments, questions from council? If not, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
He's in a hurry. Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for drainage improvements through Sunset Lane as described, and then by electronic vote.
I'd like to make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Move on to item G, consideration of approving the change order to the construction contract with Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of $38,737, CIP number W438. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor and council. What you have in front of you is a change order for the legendary well project, and I believe it's going to be the only change order. The project is complete, and this amounts to about 5% of the total construction contract. And the changes that are requested here were primarily changes required because of the function of the well, or that would basically make it work better, make the layout better. So we did some changes on fencing, the wellhead, some control changes that needed to be made, and so forth. And so those come up to the $38,737. And so those come up to the $38,737. And so I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve change order number one to the construction contract with Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of $38,737 for the legend Larry Well Project, CIP number W-438 by electronic vote. I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That's unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item H, consideration of approving a professional service agreement with Matrix New World Engineering, formerly Southwest Groundwater, in the amount of $132,331 for construction oversight of two new production wells, CIP number W-462. Sir?
Yes, mayor and council. As you're aware, we have about $3.5 million in the current budget for installing some new wells in the town. Last year, we did two new wells. This year, we're going to do two more. One of them is slated to be up in the Mingus West area. That part of the water system is physically separate from the main part down here, and we need some additional backup capacity in case we have problems with the other wells. The other well location, we don't have not yet nailed down, but last year, Matrix New World or Southwest Groundwater did the other two wells for us, and so what you have in front of you is a professional services agreement with them. And I would like to point out that the bulk of the money, the $132,000 for the two wells, most of that actually comes in being spent for having somebody on-site when the well driller is out there, and it takes them several weeks to drill down the 6, 800, 900,000-foot. They never know what they're going to encounter, and oftentimes, changes are needed to the design while they're drilling. And so, you know, you've got to have somebody out there, you know, around the clock almost. And so that's what the bulk of the costs are for. There's some design work in there, obviously, and specifications, but that's what the bulk of it is for. And I think that kind of covers it.
Thank you, sir.
For explaining that.
Any questions, council?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, ma'am.
A motion to approve a professional services agreement with Matrix New World Engineering in the amount of $132,331 for hydraulic services by electronic vote.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item I, consideration of approving the acquisition of a Ramada from Exerplay Inc., a landscape structure company via quote number SS-071519-6 under the 1GPA contract number 18-04P-03 in the amount of $49,497.51. Mr. Whitty?
My apologies, mayor and council. I had some slides up here, and apparently they are missing right now, so I'm overlooking them. My apologies. But roughly, we wanted to present to you an item that's in our 2019, 2020 budget for replacement of the American Legion Ramada there at that park. In keeping with park standards, this proposal is for a 26-by-40 Orlando model by Classic Recreation Systems. This is a very similar model that is located throughout our park system here. The quote is for $49,497. It is a turnkey product. It is inclusive of the Ramada, the reinforced concrete slab, solar lighting package, and installation for this project. If approved and awarded, staff would create the 12- to 14-week lead schedule required for completion of this project. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
I have no questions, council?
I don't have any questions. I'm just glad we're doing it. We want to be proud of every single one of our parks, and we want to manage our money well, and sometimes parks gets cut off. And so I'm delighted that we're able to do this and that our budget is healthy and comfortable, and that can happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Just so people know, American Legion Park is the only park that we have the horseshoe pits, and this is a well-used park. There's a regular league that plays there. I know the local American Legion post, Gary Streeta post, has their annual horseshoe tournament there. So again, it's well-used and well-needed, and, yeah, it's time we replace the Ramada.
Very much so. This should be a very proudful location. Not only is the American Legion is it named for, but they also help host a lot of different activities and items out there. It's also a very prized possession of the Friends of Prescott Valley Parks and Recreation simply from the fact of the tens of thousands of dollars that they've raised and grant-funded and have helped develop it into the park that it is today. So very well-deserving.
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to approve the acquisition of a Ramada from Exerplay Incorporated, a landscape structure company via quote number SS-071519-6 under the IGPA, well, 1GPA contract number 18-04P-03 in the amount of $49,497.51 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Last item, consideration of awarding a contract to the Santa Fe Station Park Irrigation System Project, CIP number P-456 in the amount of $90,400. Mr. Whitty?
Yes, sir. Again, included in this fiscal year budget is the installation of an irrigation system for Santa Fe Park. This will allow the systems installed and then park staff to be able to follow that up with the installation and final grading of topsoil and then growing that wonderful turf that we can all enjoy out there. Town received two bids for this work. On Monday, July 8th, unfortunately, one of our bidders' bid was deemed non-conforming in regards to some elements there, and we are recommending the award of the base bid submittal from Anderson Construction Corporation out of Tucson, Arizona, in the amount of $90,400.
Thank you, sir. Comments, questions?
I'd like to make the motion. A motion to award a base bid contract to the low-responsive bidder, Anderson Construction Corporation, for the Santa Fe Station Park Irrigation System Project, CIP number P-456 in the amount of $90,400.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That's unanimous, Mayor. Passed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Whitty.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Moving on, item 13, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. At this time... Sir, come on down.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Once again, my name's Clyde Pruitt. I'm here looking for some more help for code enforcement. It's been a month or so since I've been here, kind of letting things go, see where they went, and unfortunately, they haven't gone really anyplace. Last time I spoke to one of the code enforcement officers out in the neighborhood, it was the same old story. We're overwhelmed. We just don't have time to look at those issues right now. I'm back pleading with you guys for any help that you might be able to do. I know you'd mentioned at one time possibly, maybe we could do some roll-off dumpsters in the neighborhoods, make it a little bit more convenient for people to haul some stuff I don't know if we can do another Prescott Valley Cleanup Days. I don't know if that's in the budget or not. I know when we've had them in the past that you've had great turnout for those. Maybe something that might be looked at for maybe not an annual, but a biannual or something like that. I'm just looking for something to help get the older section of Prescott Valley cleaned up and keep it clean. I don't know what else to... I've said the same old story time and time again, but once again, I'm just looking for some help and guidance to get the community cleaned up and take pride in Prescott Valley the way we should be. That's it.
All right, sir. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Anyone else? With that being said, item 14?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.